President.
Here.
Betty Martine.
Here.
Here.
Wonderful, thank you. Just to remind everybody that Mr. Lee did let us know in advance that he would be missing today, so. With that, we'll go ahead and start the meeting with a moment of silent prayer. Amen. If you now please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everybody to our final meeting of May already. Is that unbelievable? It's flying by. The first thing before council tonight is the consent agenda, which consists only of the minutes of our May 5 city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
We have a first and second. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Which passes four zero. Next is appropriations ordinance fifteen dash ten. This is in the amount of one million seven hundred fifty dollars, three hundred forty-five thousand and forty-three cents. I said that wrong, didn't I? But you know what I mean. I'm sorry. It's one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars and three hundred, okay, yeah. One million, yes.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, I might mention, if anybody at home wants to know why it's a million seven hundred fifty, because...
You're probably the only one that stumbled over that number.
Yes, yes. On the last page you'll see debt service payments. So we had our annual interest payment, which is almost six hundred thousand, but we made a nine hundred thousand dollar principal payment.
Nice.
So that's a good portion of where that...
Awesome.
Fantastic.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance fifteen dash ten in the amount of one million seven hundred fifty thousand, three hundred forty-five dollars and forty-three cents.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments on appropriations ordinance fifteen dash ten?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Mrs. Martine.
I didn't get to ask these questions before, but under the senior center, the replacement for the computers times two, were those the computers that Cedric County aging bought? Or are they just the two computers in the senior room that anybody can use?
Those would be the, those would be the two, two that anybody can use. The one that Cedric County provides is, that's their responsibility.
It didn't work yet.
That's what I've heard. It's not working.
What is this annual general music license for music art display? It was only three fifty-five, but I don't know what that is.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question, because I actually, when I was reading through it, I wanted to know the same thing, so I had talked to Michelle. And actually, it's a license fee that we have to pay every year, and we protest that we have to pay it, but that doesn't do any good. But it allows us to play music at events in the rec center that are like, what do you call that?
Copyrighted.
Copyrighted. So it's a license that we can have that allows us to play.
So that we don't...
And who do we pay that to?
Like C cap or something like that?
Yeah.
Ads cap.
Ads cap.
And basically, it's so we can avoid copyright infringement lawsuits.
Like a law...
Yeah, anytime, I'll just tell you, Betty, like anytime at work if we do a video and we use it, we have to pay that license because somebody recorded or copywrote that arrangement.
Is that the pink pad for music that comes over channels?
That's part of it.
Let's get rid of it. The last question I had was, I'm not complaining, but there was a plaque from the chamber to rip. And it's a small amount that the city was charged for. Why do we pay chambers?
Actually, we had, we had an order for two, one, the plaque, and then one, which is in here, the commemorative siding pieces. And they just put it all on one bill, and then the chamber wrote a check to the city to reimburse for that cost. So, but that's why it showed up on there.
I have no more questions.
Appreciate it. We do have a first and second. Anytime you can approve something this large, because it's a principal payment. I'm excited for this. If there's no more questions, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, okay. Next are two proclamations, both coming for federal events. And I know Bel Air Facebook and Twitter was, my wife and I were in Home Depot, and she said, "You just declared such and such day." And I went, "Oh, yes, I did," because it popped up on her phone right there, that we had three of them at the last meeting, so. The first one I want to read is for Public Works Week, which actually has already begun, the week of May seventeen through twenty-third. That says, "To the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, greetings. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed public is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs, including water, sewer, streets, public buildings, solid waste collection, landfill, water disposal, code enforcement, and engineering to provide these essential services to our citizens. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding the importance of the work they perform. Therefore, I, David Austin, Mayor of the City of Bel Air, do hereby proclaim the week of May seventeen through the twenty-third of two thousand and fifteen as Public Works Week, building for today, planning for tomorrow." Happy to sign that. If you could pass that to the clerk, please. And then next, Memorial Day. We pause on Monday. I know a lot of people spend time, it seems to be cells at the mall and cookout days and pool openings. Just would hope that those would reflect Memorial Day on our service members, those that serve, you know, serve our country. And, you know, we lost somebody from Wichita in Nepal just last week in a rescue effort, and there's rescue workers through the, you know, the Red Cross and United Way and Peace Corps and all of that that are also out there. Many people that have gone before. So we'll go ahead and read, read this proclamation. "Whereas, since eighteen sixty-eight, Memorial Day has been uniquely an American day of remembrance, in which we pay our respects and honor the memory of more than one million Americans who died in battle and made the ultimate sacrifice for our country and our freedoms. And whereas, in keeping with the traditions that have preceded us, many of us have friends and family members who have selfishly given themselves to the future of this great nation and who we honor on this day. And whereas, these soldiers were someone's child, spouse, parent, and it is important that we remember every day in this great nation that our freedom came at a price. And whereas veterans have bravely served in all parts of the world, not only fighting for our freedom, but for all mankind. And whereas the City of Bel Air, Kansas, joins with other cities throughout the state of Kansas and the United States of America in honoring those who have given their lives in recognizing that their sacrifices were noble, their heroism unparalleled, and their dedication to God and country unforgettable. Therefore, I, David Austin, by virtue of the power and authority vested in me as Mayor of City of Bel Air, do hereby proclaim May twenty-fifth as Memorial Day in the City of Bel Air, and do urge all citizens to join in remembering our veterans." Pass that on, thank you. We do have a city requested appearance, Richard from the Bel Air Lions. If you could step to the podium and state your, your name and your address, and we welcome you to our meeting today. Thank you for being here.
Hi, I'm Richard Caldwell. My address, I'm a Wichita, Wichitaan, so I guess it's okay if I come across the border...
We claim ya.
But my address is forty-six zero nine East Falcon Drive in Wichita, but I'm a member of the Lions Club in Bel Air. Right now, my office is the vice, first vice president. As of July the first, I guess I'll be the president. I'm still recovering from a broken arm on that one, but you know how that is when people twist it. But I was asked to represent the Lions Club, particularly about some of the things that we're doing, particularly the shred day or the environmental day, which was the first Saturday in May. Kind of a, kind of a rundown of what we did. We had one hundred and eight vehicles show up with either papers to be shredded or, and/or electronic waste for recycling. There's a company there in Wichita that we work with, that works, that works with, either works with us or works with the city to recycle their electronic waste. And there's another company that, that shreds. I don't particularly have the names of it right now, but we, but we're guessing, we had about four thousand three hundred pounds of paper that was shredded. So we were busy. When I was there, there were quite a few computers, toasters, microwaves, anything that, the gentleman said, anything that plugs in, they'll take. Air conditioning, so you don't have to worry about the freon, they'll take care of it, which I think is quite a service. I, sometimes some people try to get rid of this stuff, and it's hard, difficult to do because you have to pay some, somebody to come in and remove the freon. They'll remove it without cost. The only cost that is incurred through electronic recycling is the glass that's on the TV sets and the monitors. If they're cathode ray, they, they charge something like fifty cents a square, a square inch. And some people have, when they bring in their big nineteen eighty set, sometimes they're paying about twenty dollars. But they say it's for a good thing. There was one problem we had during the shred day. We had people showing up with limbs, tree limbs. And I guess they, I guess the city or the county had a situation where they were shredding tree limbs, I think, the next road over, and some people thought we were the people to do that. So there was a couple of times I saw tree limbs, but we directed them the correct, correct way. So another thing I'd like to visit about is that the Bel Air Lions Club will be bringing in what they call the wellness trailer, and I'll be passing this around. The wellness trailer is, well, it was October the seventeenth during the Fall Festival that we'll be bringing this in. And it's quite a thing for the community. They check what they do, they check field of vision, they check hearing, they check visual acuity, and also check blood pressure and blood sugars. This works through the Lions Club International, which provides the trailer, only that whoever's requesting it has to pay a fee for, for them to bring it in. But it's, it is really important. They have one certain thing called the pedia vision test, which can test the visual acuity and also look for any potential vision problems for children from about six months up. And I've seen this work wonders. It's good because of being a teacher like I was before, sometimes kids, if we don't recognize their vision problems before they start reading, it's really a tough road to hold. And these kids, if they get their vision tested and get the correct, get it corrected, then I think we're doing pretty well. This is not a medical interpretation. In other words, all we do is screen, and we just make suggestions because we cannot, you know, we really, sometimes we have to be careful in our advice, too. We can recommend, and that's about it. But I'll tell you how accurate this report was. I went and ran this pedia vision down at Caldwell Elementary, and one gal came in, and she was wearing glasses, and just for the fun of it, I said, "Okay, let's just read it with your glasses, then read it without your glasses." And when I read it without her glasses, she looked at the report, says that's exactly what the doctor had recommended. So it's, it's quite a, it's a test, but again, it's not, it's not to be taken as a, as a medical test. It's just a recommendation, something you can take to, to an optometrist and say, you know, this is what they found out. Another thing that, again, this is, this will be in October the seventeenth during Fall Festival. We'll probably be doing some more advertising about this situation, and we're glad to do this. We've been really working for this. I know Lion Gary was able to bring the trailer in because of a last minute cancellation from another Lions Club. As you know, Lions Clubs raise money for projects for the city and for the schools and, in the area. And anyway, the thing that we're working for now is we'll be having a fireworks stand. So if you would, if you have a strong back and a weak mind, we'd like to have you come and help us with the fireworks. We just need, we're getting to be old men, so we need probably some help just moving around, around crates. So if you happen to have a, in fact, if you even happen to have a young man or a young lady who would like to have free fireworks, maybe we can make arrangements for them to help us on this, because we'll be needing it. Again, we're old men and old ladies, and we have problems with carrying stuff like that. But anyway, the money that we gain from our projects go for things that are good for the community. And right now, we're at a standstill on what can we do that the community needs. And I'm pretty sure there's a laundry list of things. As you know, we, we worked and donated that pavilion that's sitting at the rec mission, beautiful pavilion. And I guess we're just saying, "Okay, we're done with that, let's go on to do something else." So if you have any ideas, particularly from the council or from the community, that Bel Air Lions Club can work on to, for a project to better the community, you know, let us know. Work you can either go through, I don't have, I don't have any phone numbers, but I'm pretty sure that if they contact the city hall, they can, you know, give, give it either to Lion Gary or, or to me to pass it along. Lastly, I would like to talk about our membership. And I know I'm doing a little advertising right now. We're starting, we, we as a club are working very hard to do things that'll benefit the community. Pretty soon, we're going to be looking out there, and pretty soon, we're going to lose membership, either through attrition or just through, just through old age. And so really, if we could promote the Lions, this club helps the community, and also, it's a great service. It's to say, "Well, I've been there, and I helped the community, I've helped people in the world," just that, you know, warm feeling that sometimes we need to have. So if we, so if you could do any way you could help to us for our membership. I heard one, one suggestion was, we have a brochure that we made, and maybe we can stuff that brochure in, in a packet that's given out by the city to new, to, to new residential people. So keep that in mind. I have nothing else to say. Are there any questions that I could stumble through?
Yeah, Richard, you talk about membership, and there's two members of the Lions up here, one very active, and then there's me. But the meetings, if you could tell the folks at home, and I know dues, very reasonable, fifty dollars a quarter, if I remember correctly? Yeah, fifty dollars a quarter, so two hundred dollars a year, which is pretty cheap when you look at other social and civic clubs and all the great work that the Bel Air Lions Club does here. Can you remind the folks when the meetings are? They're, they're on the first and third Wednesday, is it?
No, the fir, yeah, the second and fourth Wednesdays.
Second and fourth.
They, we have a, we have a lunch meal. It's five dollars a meal, and you can't get a nicer meal. You go down to McDonald's, like, oh, I'm sorry. If you go down to someplace, a fast food place, you know, you're looking at eight dollars. So really, if, if you are a business person and would like to become part of this, this is a good place to have a lunch during our second and, and fourth, or second and fourth Wednesdays. I want to tell you, there's not too many clubs in this world where you have to pay to work. And so, but it's a, but it's a good pay, and it's a good, it's good. It just gives you that feeling that, hey, we're part of a group to do that. And the, some of the projects that we sponsor, particularly our fireworks stand, and also we have the Taste of Italy, which is very, which seems to draw a pretty big crowd. Last year, I can't remember, Councilman Guy, what, what it was.
I can't remember. I'm sorry to not be able to help you.
It was huge.
It was a good crowd.
Yes.
No doubt about it. Best one we had, I think.
And, and the community has really been supportive of Lions, and the city has been supportive of Lions, and I really appreciate that as a Lions Club member, and I know the, the members would probably agree with me on that.
Line, Richard?
Yes, sir.
Could you tell us how much money is spent by the Lions on administrative cost? All of the money that is raised by the club, could you tell the public just how much of that goes to administrative, you know, administration?
Well, the money that we raise through these projects, none of it goes into, into administrative costs. Administrative costs are covered by dues that are conferred upon the members. Again, a hundred percent of the service project money goes into the projects. I think this is, we were acclaimed, the Lions International came out saying that we were the only organization that they know of that uses a hundred percent of their project monies for, for projects. You know, you have other organizations that takes some of their money that they raise through other things, and they put them into administrative costs, but we're, one hundred percent of your project money goes into the projects. And that's why dues are important. And sometimes, there's a little comical thing that goes along with this, if part of, you have to be careful of what you say during meetings. We have a gentleman called the tail twister. And there's this kind of a song saying, you know, about the guy who plays the trumpet, you always want to shoot the trump, the trumpeter, because he wakes you up in the morning. Well, we want to shoot the guy that is the tail twister, because if you make one mistake, it costs you a quarter, and he lets you know about it, so. And this group is very, very, very dignified, but I think we're trying to start a core, sort of an idea that we're also dignified, but I don't know, we're just, we're just in couth, I guess, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. I, I had a question. If we want to come to a meeting, do we need to RSVP?
Not real, well, more than anything, just to know who you are, really.
Okay.
And again, I just would love to have you come. I would even...
I would love to, now that school's officially over today, I might be able to come some, so I wondered if we needed to call ahead or not.
I think just, well, for us to show up, and it's at the Gospel Assembly Church, which is on Oliver.
Yeah, I know, right. Okay, thank you.
I forgot to mention our location. We have people wondering where to go. But, yeah, just, I mean, for one thing, I'm just, you know, if you come in, either say Lion Gary's name or my name, and we'll, and you're always welcome. Eleven thirty is when we eat, and definitely, we're looking for, we want good, good, fine, upstanding members, too, so. We may, we may thrust a membership pamphlet into your face.
Mrs. Martine?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that you took back to the Lions, the rest of the Lions, that the shelter over at the rec center is very much appreciated.
Good, I'm glad to hear that.
And I've had several people stop me in the grocery stores and beauty shop and say, "Who put that up? It's fantastic."
I'm glad to hear that.
And the last thing, I might get in trouble, but I have a suggestion for you to take back. We are looking at, and still looking at, a crosswalk across Woodlawn so that the children on the east side can get to the west side to play in the Little Bel Air Park instead of just running across the street. Nothing fancy, just some lights that caution or give a stop that children are crossing there and that type of thing. And we could probably use your help on going a long way with that for the children of Bel Air.
Okay. Again, will this be down in the minutes where I can get the exact, it's, what's, what's the location again, if we're on the crosswalk?
It would be on Forty-Fifth.
Right across Forty-Fifth or, I thought they were looking actually off of Odessa.
But it would cross from like Odessa on Forty-Fifth, Odessa across to that Bel Air Park.
Okay, very good.
Because that has the tennis courts and the basketball...
Oh, I know where you are now.
Yeah. All of that stuff there that, and a lot of children's...
Looking at, at Odessa to Woodlawn.
Games or...
Cross.
Now, my question is, I know I'm going to be asked about this, does that qualify for federal or state funds? And I say with, I say that with my cheek, with my tongue in cheek on that, state funds.
No. No, we've looked into it, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, thank you.
Now, that was mentioned at a meeting. That's one thing that, that we talked about is, is that crosswalk. Of course, we're looking at, you know, we, we could raise, I think last, our last, we raised about, about, what, about nine, nine or eight thousand dollars in our, with that fireworks stand. But, you know, your, those lights are going to be worth quite a bit of money.
Well, we were thinking solar lights, I believe.
Solar lights?
Uh-huh.
And we could certainly get that information to you.
We wouldn't have electricity.
Okay. Well, let me, again, this was mentioned at the, at the meeting. In fact, we have a, we have a board of directors meeting tomorrow, and I'll just go back and I'll mention that this was mentioned, again, as a project. And, and if we may form a committee, if that's what we look at. And hopefully, we have a nice Fourth of July like we did last time, where it doesn't rain, so we don't, you know, where we get, learn a lot of money on our fireworks stand.
Right.
Thank you so much for coming today and everything the Lions do.
Thank you for letting me, and again, you are more than welcome to attend the, attend the meeting. Again, it's fourth, it's second and fourth Wednesdays, eleven thirty a.m. at the Gospel Assembly Church.
The next one will be May twenty-seventh. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any citizens concerned, so we'll move on to reports. I have nothing formal, just to remind, I think Councilmember Peggy just said, you know, school is out now, children are going to be out, Memorial Day is coming up, as you know, so just, again, be aware, there's, seems to be more and more kid activity by the day in my neighborhood, to, to be aware of that. Also, just want to let everybody know, the Community Development Advisory Committee was supposed to meet yesterday. We postponed that meeting, and we're going to continue to talk one-on-one with some of those members, and hopefully have a consensus idea here in the very near future on that. But with that, we'll see, Councilmember Report, start with you, Dr. Becker.
Well, I don't have anything really formal either, but I just wanted to mention that after Ken gave his report last time about all the housing going up in Bel Air, which I was aware of, but not to the extent that he mentioned. And so I took a ride around town, and it was just wonderful to see everything going up. It was more than I realized. And also, I took a ride around all the new cul-de-sacs up here in Chapel Hill Landing, that new development, and that's going to be just a beautiful area up there with two ponds filling up very nicely now with the rain. And we're very thankful for the rain, and so that's all I had to say. I did take the time to do that, and it was really delightful to see everything happening.
Thank you.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
No report.
Mrs. McDonald?
I would like to say a few things. I was, I read through the appropriations account for the month, and I saw continuing charges, which I understood, and I added it up. It was about sixty-seven hundred dollars, and it was for IT, basically. And the city, as well as any other organization, is, is going to have increasing IT cost. And at the level it was for this past month, we had a, a website go up, and we had some adjustments to the website and et cetera. So it, it added to the total amount, but I'm told... But I'm told that we spend between, oh, $4,000 and $7,000 a month from time to time. And so that amounts to, in my opinion, around $75,000 possibly for a year's worth of effort. And I certainly am not in, I'm not trying to dispute the cost or, or challenge the cost at all, but I think that the city should consider hiring an IT individual with a salary that will enable that individual to not only do the, some of the important things like the website and so on, but also will be, will enable them to, you know, check the cameras on, on city council meetings, check the audio, and both have problems. Citizens have told me this and I've seen it myself. So I think that if we had an individual on staff, that it would be worthwhile and we would get a lot, we would get a lot of benefit from it. And so, having said that, Mr. Mayor, that's my, my report and recommendations.
Appreciate it. Yeah, I think, yeah, that's something we definitely are going to look into. They're putting that, okay. Mrs. Martine?
Yes, I'd like to wish everybody a safe and happy Memorial Day. I know for some families, it won't be very happy because they've lost loved ones in the service and et cetera and, but, and also like to wish Ramona a late birthday from last year on, or last Friday. We didn't have a council meeting, so I thought it'd be appropriate to bring her a little bouquet of flowers and.
Thank you very much.
Wish Public Works the best week ever. These people that work down in Public Works, they're behind the scenes, they go to people's houses and help them out under stress, water, sewer, different line breaks and et cetera. And a lot of times, people don't realize, but those guys really take it to it and they just stand there and grin. But I hope that they have a wonderful week. That's all, Mayor.
Very well said. Thank you. City Attorney?
No report this evening.
City Manager?
A couple items, Mayor. This, this weekend is in fact Memorial Day and typically, that's when pools open. Well, we're hoping that the Central Park Pool will be open by Monday, but this rain has really put a kink in the work that's being done down there. Council approved some deck replacements because the concrete was shifting and it was causing trip hazards and things. That's been done. And then they sandblasted the liner of the pool and they're putting new fiberglass in, but because of the rain, they can't do it when it's raining. And so they're about half done. And then looking at the forecast, there's a chance of rain some more this week and even into the weekend. So if they can get that coated this, this week, it's going to need another day or two at the most, then they'll have to fill it and then, of course, the water will be pretty cold. So weather permitting and construction permitting, we'll have the pool open this weekend, but if not, people will know that there's a delay and why. And it's for sure, unless we would get, you know, a typhoon or something, we should be open next week for the pool. And again, it's open to the public, so citizens can go in and buy a day pass or they can buy a family membership or a single membership. And so it is open to the public and we do have a lot of people that take advantage of the, the pool. Just a note that City Hall will be closed Monday due to Memorial Day. And then Elk Creek is having an open house for the preserves and the courtyards on May 28th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. So that's next week, I think Thursday. So if any of the citizens are out and want to go see what's happening down at Elk Creek, it'll be open and I think they'll have some snacks and some drinks and things and you can go take a look down there. We'll let the public know as well, so.
Before CCA?
Yeah.
Yes, the CCA.
Yeah, CCA.
That's all I had, Mayor.
Alrighty. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to ask Mr. Lasher a question. You mentioned the liner for the pool. What, I have some familiarity, what kind, I think you said fiberglass, did you say?
Yeah, they, I think it's fiberglass that they blow on to the.
Oh, they blow it on?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Because the, the pool's concrete and then they put, blow on this fiberglass lining.
That's what I was confused about because a liner pool is a, a physical thing that attaches to the side of the pool and you replace it every 10 years or whatever. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, but they actually blow it on.
Thank you. Anything else? Well, that will move to our one and only ordinance resolution and final action. And that, before council this evening, is consideration of an agreement with Andel Paving for reconstruction of Edgemore from 45th Street North to 41st Street North at a cost of $578,558.52.
So moved.
Second.
No, first and second. Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Has anyone been by and checked on Edge, not Edgemore, Gunnison Street since this company did almost the same thing? Now, I was by there Friday morning to go pick a friend up to take her to the airport when it was just starting to rain, might be before 8:00. And boy, both of those gutters were full. And I thought they put storm drainage, those big bar things, those openings in the street underneath, under the curb and put bars over them?
No, that area of town does not have storm drainage systems and that's why the streets get so much water down them. And the valley gutters that are in there, that gets, they're concrete and they get so broken up, it's because there's so much water that goes through them. And so there's, there's, the new subdivisions do have the underground pipes for that, but the old area of Bel Air does not. And it would be quite expensive to put in all of those concrete tubes and the inlets and things like that.
Well, I thought we extended one of the contracts to, to do that at the last, before they finished all that work. Was that on something else?
That was not on Gunnison. I forget what street that is. Yeah, because we did this, both of them at the same time.
I remember we had.
Was it on Gundy then?
Oh, you're putting me on the spot. What, I'm trying to think.
We've been.
It was like two meetings ago, two or three meetings ago.
We did, we had to do a, or add a drainage structure to Elk Creek at Woodlawn. That was a drainage structure we had to put in.
This was over in that area. Of course, it did them.
It was one of the streets on our priority list, I remember. It was not Gunnison though, but it was one when we did the curb at the same time, we went ahead and did the drainage because it was a lot cheaper since they were going to be in there, but.
Well, and what we've been doing over there is the, oh, the valley gutters, we've been putting those in. We've replaced a number of those, which are concrete. But again, that's just a portion in the street where it dips to allow the water to travel over it. And then, of course, we're working in Trib 7 over there too. And that's a sewer line that we're putting in.
Well, it was probably a good thing, I looked in the phone book to find, to the gentleman, Jeff, I can't pronounce his last name, that ran for council.
Odenmetal.
He lives on Gunnison and I was going to call him and ask him how the drainage went. But those gutters were full Friday morning.
Yeah.
And I know another lady that lives on the corner, but I never did get a hold of her either. So I was just kind of concerned how their drainage was going. It looked like it was really running down the gutter on both sides.
Yeah.
Because it was, but, you know, with that much rain and that length of time, probably Saturday was, it was over the road, I imagine. I don't know, I didn't go look, but.
And you probably would notice a difference from the new roads and the new curbs because they're not broke up anymore to stop the water, for the water to seep in under, which is what causes the road damages, that gets all these cracks and it seeps in and then causes the curb to break up and pull apart and stuff. So with it all new, it probably would run pretty faster there.
Oh, yeah, it was. But, so on this one on 45th and 41st Street and north on Edgemore, we're going to do it the same way up to 45th?
There's a portion of that we're doing from 45th down to about 40, well, let me see, 45th. Oh, from Edgemore Court to 45th Street will be a two-inch millon overlay.
Okay.
And then from 45th to Gunnison is an actual reconstruction of the, the street and with that concrete. So, so from 45th to Gunnison.
From 45th to Edgemore Court or wherever that is, they already have the storm drainage things right there, don't they?
And they might, yeah, I'm not sure about on.
I think years ago, when that street was widened and put in, that they did put those in.
Okay. And then, and they're going to get new curb and guttering as well.
Because we had, I remember we had to go back and put those iron bars over that, those things that went under the curb because they were afraid children would fall in there or animals or something.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. First and second on the motion, are there any other questions? Call for the vote, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four, zero. Future issues discussion, I have none. Is anybody? And I have no need for an executive session and I'm unaware of one, except for a funny joke. All right, one thing left.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adjourn. Second.
Say, really? No one's seconding that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She passes, we are adjourned.